How's it going guys? Welcome back to the You Know Adam St. Podcast where you get to know a little bit more about people, passions and all things business. Today I'm joined by Phil Bohm.
Bohem.
Bohem.
Bohem, yes.
Bohem, okay.
Good Norwegian name.
Norwegian.
That's right.
That's interesting. And he is a city councilman for District One.
That's right.
In Statesboro, Georgia. Welcome to the show.
Thanks, Adam. Great to be here. You got a nice setup in the restaurant. It's unusual to be in your restaurant at 7:45 in the morning, but it's looking beautiful in here and thanks for having me.
Very nice. So Phil, I'm gonna jump right into it. What is it like being a politician in the age of 2020?
Well, it may sound a little stuffy, but I like to consider myself an elected official as opposed to a politician. I'm not a particularly good politician mainly because I'll always tell you what I think.
Very nice.
And I try to be pretty honest about my assessment of things. I don't think of things in terms of how they benefit me unless benefiting me first benefits the citizens that live in my district and the citizens that live in my community. So what's it like in this day and age? It's like anything else. It's like running your restaurant. I mean, it's challenging in the days of COVID. There's a lot of divisiveness right now. And even at the local level, that can be challenging. But it's also an interesting time. I mean, I'm half a century old now. I was around, you know, when the internet launched and I was around when in 2000 when it really went big. And I was around when cell phones came around. So when we really look around, I think there's a lot of tension out there. But I also think, man, humanity is making a lot of progress. And if we can just use the tools that we've made to really do some positive things, I think the next century can actually be pretty good. So it's a challenging time, but it's, I don't know, it's a fun time. I'm a big guy. I like economic development. So there's a lot of that going on right now. So that's what's fun for me. I try to find what's fun.
Yeah, and we spoke about this a little bit earlier, talking about kind of your approach to policies and things that you do. And you really hit on this economic development. In fact, you are the...
Business analyst at the Business Innovation Group at Georgia Southern University in the Parker College of Business.
That sounds fun. Which one do you enjoy more?
My business card is four by eight.
That's awesome.
Which one, what now?
Which one do you enjoy more? Like, do you prefer one or the other?
Well, they actually go hand in hand.
Okay.
So from a political philosophy or a policy philosophy, public policy, I firmly believe in the, you know, the basic idea of rising tide lifts all boats. But what that means from a policy standpoint is policies that promote economic development. And when I say economic development, I'm not talking public housing or things like that, like empowering people to create businesses, empowering communities to come together, developing infrastructure. You know, I was talking to a city a couple of months ago and I was telling them, you know, when you put in a street, that street doesn't generate revenue. What generates revenue are the businesses and the residents and the communities that come together on either side of that street to work together to create an economic... So you see what I'm saying? So you need to invest in the basics. And what that does is that lifts everybody up. And there's this idea, it's kind of a fairly simple idea. If everybody's got an Xbox, why do I gotta steal yours?
That's right.
And so when economic development also can solve a lot of societal issues, when folks aren't worried where their next meal is coming from, they're less violent, they're less full of anxiety, suicides go down, violence goes down, domestic violence goes down, crime goes down. All those things go down when you lift up, you know, you lift people out of poverty. And then so from the flip side, now as a business analyst at Georgia Southern, working in the Business Innovation Group, we, you know, work to promote entrepreneurs. So we're trying to take these folks that have these ideas and help train them up and help turn them into businesses and help turn them into future employers that then go out into the community and buy real estate and buy a house and continue the process.
So you equip entrepreneurs to be ready for, I guess, business to start, right?
Well, you know, I mean, just like you, you're an entrepreneur, but you've got the podcast here. I know you do some video stuff as well as running a restaurant. And I know you do a couple of other things. So you've got a lot of things going on and you've got that initiative. But not everybody has that total initiative that you have. Not that people aren't energetic. Sometimes they just don't know where to go.
Okay.
And so I think if there's anything that big does best, it's just pointing people where to go. So if you come in, hey, I need, you know, money. I've got this business idea and I've started to get a few customers, but I need to expand. Okay, well, we need to hook you up with the Small Business Development Center because they're good at, you know, loans for businesses with three to five people, you know, those kinds of things. You know, our Fab Lab and our Learning Center.
Which is amazing, by the way. The Fab Lab, phenomenal job. I mean, what you off, the services that you offer there are, you know, I haven't seen anything like that in Statesboro.
Not in South Georgia, for sure. And yeah, but to just kind of take a step back, what we're trying to do is just trying to provide the support the entrepreneurs need. Because not every, I mean, you gotta do everything as an entrepreneur. You gotta be in HR. You gotta do marketing. You gotta do selling. You gotta do books. You gotta do ordering. I mean, you gotta do a little bit of everything as that. And so not everybody knows how to do a little bit of everything. So we try to fill in the gaps.
Do you think that everybody has the ability to become an entrepreneur? I mean, because like entrepreneur at this stage and age, I mean, everybody wants it, in my opinion. I think it's become like this hot thing of like, well, you see like, you know, the Jeff Bezos, the Mark Zuckerbergs of the world, they've absolutely dominated and that was their entrepreneurial spirit, right? Do you think that there is a trend that like moving towards like going towards this direction? Because do you think that people want to be their own boss?
Well, yes.
Okay.
But do I think people want to run their own business? Not all the time. I think if you really truly want to be an entrepreneur, you want to go into business for yourself, whatever the case may be, the one thing you have to focus on, and it's the one thing you have to focus on in business, period, and you know this considering you have a restaurant, you have to focus on the service you're providing to people. That's your business. You're providing a service. Now, sometimes it's a product in this day and age, but you know, small manufacturers are harder to find. So let's face it, we're very much a service economy. Over 80% of our jobs are in service. So it's what kind of service do you want to, what do you want to get up and do for other people every single day? What do you want, you know, what, that's what, if you can find out that answer, you know, for some folks, it's they want to sell real estate. For some folks, you want to help with insurance. For some folks, it's they want to help people fix themselves. So you know, do elbows and knees or whatever the case may be. In your case, you know, you want to give them nice cocktails during happy hour and some really pretty food during dinner. So what kind of service do you want to provide to people? If you can find out that in your mind, that's more important than finding out your passion.
So that was actually diving into my next question. Is that the same as passion? Because if you're passionate about something, in theory, you, I mean, this is, this is the thing that we are told every single day, right? So, you know, if you find your passion, you never have to work a day in your life. I feel like that's a classic kind of like thing that we are brought up with. Do you feel like those two go hand in hand?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Okay, because, okay, let's just say I have a passion and there's nothing wrong with like making the little, you know, like the little reed crosses or the little reed, you know, flowers or whatever. But that's just not a service that a lot of people are looking for. So that you can have a passion for something, but if nobody really is looking for that in their lives, then you're not providing a service to other people. Now, you know, you have to combine that passion with service though. But you have to find a way to serve other people, you know. Even when I tell, we talk about, you know, folks will complain about, oh, those high paid athletes, blah, 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 you know, complaining about Michael Jordan or Kobe Bryant or LeBron James or whatever generation you want to talk about. You know, those, but those basketball players, when you think about it, when they're playing, tens of millions of people are watching them play and getting entertainment value out of that. And they're doing it 80 times a season and they're doing it for 15 years. And yeah, you may think they're overpriced, but if you really think about it and they're just getting like, you know, 30 cents a game per viewer. If you're only getting a little bit from each person, that's great. But it's like Jeff Bezos. Why does he have a trillion dollars? It's not because he made a trillion dollars off of one client. He made a dollar off of, you know, seven billion people practically. Yeah, so, but to switch back to the passion, you do have to have a passion for service. And I think that's really the key to anybody who's in, in business of any kind. Whether you're doing dog grooming or hair cutting or toenails or, I mean, whatever kind of service you're providing, it has to be a service that people want.
Very nice. Let's switch directions for a second. What do you think is the future of Statesboro? You know, I think that, you know, we have, before pre-COVID, you know, there was a lot of projects that were happening in Statesboro that's really exciting. Post-COVID, I think honestly, the food scene has really improved. You know, we have kind of like new restaurants in town, you know, Tandoor and Tab, Bull and Barrel, I believe Patterson's just opened. I feel like there's a little bit more ethnic food, for whatever reason, as opposed to pre-COVID, right? What's the next move, I guess, for this region in your opinion?
Well, just to speak to the restaurants, those restaurants were coming before COVID. So the reason they've kind of just sprung up here lately is because they were planning to open in March and nobody was opening nothing in March. So we were closing it all down, people. So, but yeah, I think there's, there's always been a little bit of a demand. Well, I mean, I still will be, I could be an elected official for life if I bring a Red Lobster to Statesboro. I still clamor for people here and that.
Don't do that now. As someone who has a seafood restaurant, we don't want to be doing that.
No, it's probably not coming. But, you know, we have students from all over the globe. And so those things tie together, your questions about the which direction is Statesboro going and why do we have so many different restaurant varieties? I think for one thing, Statesboro is kind of a testing ground. You got a lot of college students here. So it's kind of like, you know, hey, people are trying things out. We've seen restaurant concepts come and go. And then I think a little bit in the restaurant, not to beat up on the restaurant industry, too bad. But then there's some folks that have started a restaurant and they never really ran a restaurant and maybe that wasn't their thing. And sometimes a restaurant is kind of like an old vintage car, you know, it's like you buy it and you put it in your garage and it's like, I'm gonna fix that up. You know, I'm gonna replace every part, you know, and then, and then they find it in a barn 50 years later, right? Yeah. So...
I think you bring up a valid point, you know. Statesboro is a market where it's a great market to launch products. So for restaurants, the cost of entry is actually relatively low as opposed to when you're looking at Atlanta.
That's right.
I don't know.
Or Savannah.
Exactly. Have you seen the little spaceship things that take food around, like their robots? I mean, they, I think they, Statesboro was one of the first places that launched that, which is completely awesome.
We got Lime scooters early. So yeah, Statesboro is a little bit cutting edge. Folks will come here. We're not a huge university market like in Ohio State or in University of Texas. It's kind of hard to launch a new product on a campus that big.
Sure.
So we're that nice mid-sized campus. But I tell you what, that, to answer your first question about COVID and how's Statesboro gonna evolve, I think Statesboro evolves hand in hand with how Georgia Southern evolves. And I'll be honest with you. Pre-COVID, Georgia Southern was, I would say, not suffering, but it was a challenge because there was still this urbanization of America. There was a lot of, if you notice, like in Athens, there's a lot more concentration downtown. In Macon, in Augusta, you remember Augusta 10 years ago? I mean, we love you people up in Disgusta, pardon me, but you know, the downtown strip there was just dead and now that's thriving. And it's because there's this, there was until earlier this year, there was this concentration of people moving into downtowns and wanting to live upstairs from their coffee shop, wanting to walk.
Work, live, play.
That's correct. Well, work, live, play is concentration of people. And with COVID, it's like social distancing, which is the opposite of concentration. And so I'm circling around to saying that Georgia Southern could be poised because we have such an open campus. There's a lot of greenery. There's a lot of sun. There's a lot of warmth. You know, we have, we don't have a high concentration of, I mean, we do have some residence halls, but you know, it's, the campus itself is spread out. We're down here in the south and there's a move. I mean, look at San Francisco. Look at New York City. These places are emptying out. And Florida's real estate market, even Georgia's real estate market right now is blowing up, especially down here.
That's true.
All these people wanting to have a little bit of acreage. So now imagine all those folks up in Atlanta wanting to send their kids somewhere where they, where they can be safe and they can be in a safe environment. So I think Georgia Southern has that kind of mid-sized, nice campus, good, attractive outside. They're poised to, to compete in this university market, which is going to be tough because 2026 is gonna be the lowest number of college freshmen in the last two decades.
Well, is that what it's trending towards?
It's just the demographic shift, you know. I mean, you had your baby boomers and then you had your millennial bump. Well, in between the bumps is a valley. A valley is coming up in 2026 for college freshmen.
Interesting. So what do you think is gonna happen for that? Just, you know, looking at, I guess, Georgia Southern in general, right? Like, you know, I look, sometimes I walk on campus and I look around and I'm like, wow, like this place is, it's beautiful, like with the buildings. I mean, there's, they're constantly, I think they have a new engineering building that they're kind of, they're almost done with. And just the amount of money that's been placed onto that campus. What happens at that valley? Does that mean that anybody that, I guess, applies is able to get in? Or how are they going to be able to tough through that period of time? In your opinion?
Well, I think that's what you were looking at in, again, just, I mean, in January, these are questions that they were asking. I think they're asking a little bit different questions now. For one, I think a lot of small universities are probably gonna close down. A lot, you know, just a lot of these, I mean, you're seeing, and then you're seeing a lot of trimming of the larger universities. You know, University of Texas, University of Minnesota, these guys are cutting programs. Well, where are those tennis players gonna go? Well, we're still playing tennis here at Georgia Southern. See what I'm saying? So, I mean, we have the opportunity to kind of be that middle ground between a huge campus like Ohio State and a really tiny campus. And the tiny campuses, especially the small private colleges there that are non-religious, so that they don't have a church backing them. Those small, small private type colleges are really, and you saw it before, in Georgia, we were already consolidating campuses, right?
Armstrong.
Armstrong was one. West Georgia, up in Gainesville, they did it. So there was three or four different consolidations or mergers or whatever you want to call them. And there's a possibility that that would, I mean, don't, please don't quote me, but I mean, there's a possibility that something like that could happen. So you're just gonna see, I think you're, I don't know. Especially if COVID keeps going on, I think you're gonna see more folks just wanting, more students wanting to come and have that. You gotta give something to President Grooby back in the day. And I don't know if you know Bruce Grooby. But he's the one that kind of conceived or planned that pedestrian, the big long sidewalk that, you know, with the pavers that runs through campus. And that's a beautiful walk. I mean...
What walk is this?
The pedestrian, that's the one that goes from the, from the rotunda all the way down to the business school and down there where the buses in the circular area.
Just that single, single.
Just that big two side, it's like a two lane highway there. You see all the Lime scooters and things like that. Yeah, that was, that used to be just grass. And so he puts in this nice pedestrian because clearly there was probably a cow path through there before. And you know, it just makes for a beautiful campus, the huge oak trees. I mean, it's, Georgia Southern's a nice looking place. And I think it's affordable. Cost of living here is reasonable. So I think all those factors, if we can not make some kind of major societal diversity type mistake over there at Georgia Southern. And I think if we don't do something like that, that, you know, puts a stain on us. I think Georgia Southern and Statesboro are poised to grow.
I would, I would completely agree with you. I want to take the conversation back to entrepreneurship. You know, these, these, these heavy hitting entrepreneurs, a lot of times, don't go to college.
Sure.
How important is entrepreneurship in college as a combination?
How important is, well, again, it depends, man. I mean, if you're a Bill Gates, I mean, let's face it, when we're talking about some of these guys, these are, these are right side of the bell curve, three standard deviations. I mean, these guys are in the 99.7%. That's what I'm saying. These are, you know, 16, these guys would be getting 1600s on the SATs if they were bothering to take them.
That's right. That's right.
But, you know, so it's hard to compare most entrepreneurs to somebody like that, you know, somebody who can conceive of and can program Google. That's just not the same. You're asking me to maybe talk to a high school freshman and say, or a high school senior, and what do you want to do with your life? Well, I'll tell you this, this is an interesting perspective. Decide one thing first. Do you want to pick where you live or do you want to pick your career? And what I mean by that is, let's just say you really want to live in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, or you really want to live in Brunswick, Georgia, right? Or wherever the case may be, Lincoln, Nebraska. And you just love Lincoln. You want to live there. You want to, you want to be there. There's a lot of jobs. You don't, as a matter of fact, there's a ton of jobs. You can do a ton of careers and you can make very good living. Do some, you could become, seriously, you could become a car salesman. You become a car salesman, you never leave Lincoln, Nebraska. You're there for 20 years and you're good at it and you treat people well and you serve your community. In 20 years, you'll have so many clients coming to you because you're that honest car salesman that you'll never have to go out and knock on doors, you know what I mean? If you're a real estate guy, at 18 years old, you get into real estate and you crank real estate for 20 years, well, you'll probably be a broker at 38 and now you own your own firm. And you see what I'm saying? And none of that requires air quotes, college. Now, of course, they require education. It's just a different kind of education. Now, if you want to be flexible and you want to be able to move around, that's where college really comes in handy. So if you want to be in nursing or if you want to be in management or if you want to be in corporate or if you want to be an engineer, you know, and you want to be an engineer, you don't really care where you work. You want to be an engineer. That's what college is, those professional degrees. So, and then you go where the work is. You know, I've told folks who want to be college professors, I go, be willing to move to Boise, Idaho or New Mexico or you're not gonna be able to really pick where you're gonna live. So if that's the, you know, the air quote risk you want to take later on in life, that's great. But if you want to pick and choose where you want to live, there's a lot of careers that you can do. So, I mean, heaven forbid I work for Georgia Southern University. Education is important, kids. Stay in school. But, but that, but that being said, but that being said too, if you're in real estate, you know, maybe you don't need an engineering degree. You may maybe need like an accounting degree to manage your business. Or you need, you know, in that case, if you've decided what you want to do with your life and you go to college, go to college to, to either improve your strengths or to fill in a gap. But I usually encourage people to, don't worry about your weaknesses so much. Improve your strengths. Hire somebody who's good at your weaknesses.
Sure.
You know what I mean? Like, I'm, I'm good at copy, but I'm not good at design. So if I'm gonna do a graphic or something like that for somebody, I'm not doing the graphic. I'm gonna give it to somebody who's got an eye for that kind of thing and rely on them. I may say, hey, I need something green or I may need it kind of, you know, flashy or...
This is what I want, but be able to delegate.
And you delegate your weaknesses. Keep your strengths because that's what you're good at. That's what you're efficient at. You're not efficient at your weaknesses. So that's where you need to find either partnerships or, or good subcontractors, for lack of a better description, yeah, to fill in your weaknesses. So I always encourage folks to focus on their strengths. So I mean, as far as what you asked me about college, that's what I would recommend. Decide if you want your job to determine your life path or where you live to determine your life path. And determine your career that way. Because let's face it, you live in Millin and you want to stay in Millin, Georgia, and you want to be a biochemist.
That's right. It's gonna be difficult to make that happen.
Not a whole lot of biochemistry labs in Millin.
Let's talk about kind of like, I actually, that's the first time I've ever heard that approach before. How did that play out kind of on your end? Like, you know, how, how did you decide? Were you looking at career first? Did you decide where you wanted to live?
No. I married somebody that was a college professor. And so I'm what they, what they term a trailing spouse. Yeah. So they get the job and you show up and you go, all right, what the hell am I gonna do?
What am I supposed to do now? Very nice. I'm here, I'm here in Statesboro. So she, she came to Statesboro or she's from Statesboro?
No, no, no. She, Georgia Southern is why. And, and actually, that's, that's why I went for the, to work for the newspaper when I first got here. I knew Statesboro was kind of a small town. I had sold the construction business and I had to move out here. It was 2007, so I wasn't getting back into construction. And I just said, you know what? There was a, I just saw an ad in the paper, oddly enough, to work for the paper. And, and took the job in journalism and really just dove in and started to get to know people. And as I got to know the community, I got to appreciate things a little better. And, you know, when, when an opportunity came to serve the community on the city council, I, you know, I thought I had some name recognition. I thought I had some good ideas. And I thought I was educated enough about the position that I could do it. I'm never gonna, I would never run for an office where I don't feel like I know what I'm doing. You know what I'm saying? So it's why I don't really do the state stuff yet. As much as I like the state and I'm not, would never, people ask me all the time, are you gonna run for state rep or state senator or something like that? You know, no, I like the local issues. I like the local economic development because you can see the benefit. You can see the benefit right in your own community. You can see the excitement it generates. So it's fun.
I guess the higher, what that means is the higher that you get up, the more disconnected you feel from like, kind of like the ground, right?
Well, think of our US congressmen. They, congresspeople, congresspersons. I'm not sure anymore.
It's all good.
Yeah. 678,000 constituents. I mean, if you just think about how many seconds you have in a year. I mean, you couldn't even, you couldn't even talk to each person for two seconds without, you know, you'd never sleep.
That's right.
So yeah, at my level, I've got 6,600 citizens that I'm responsible for and, you know, a lot of those are kids. So I don't have to really deal with them too much, you know. You deal with your own kids. I got mine. You deal with yours. It's the American way, baby.
I like it. I like it.
So, but no, yeah, you get closer to it. I mean, city stuff is boring, really. I mean, if you really want to get down to it, it's ditches and sewer and water pipes and streets and, I mean, come on. What's the number one complaint? Potholes or crappy streets? You know what I'm saying? So, you know, 92% of what we do is pretty boring. But, you know, when you get to do something like fund the grant or help facilitate the grant that originally put the Business Innovation Group downtown. You know, we've been able to get some other awards and economic development awards, like they're gonna put a new training and conference center downtown, a smaller one. Yeah. So we're getting, the EDA, hopefully is gonna announce that money here pretty soon. So, you know, that's, it's exciting to see the streets where you're walking around and moving around and to see them improve. That, that to me is the rewarding part of it.
So let's go back in time a little bit, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So we, so when you first got here, you worked at the Statesboro Herald.
Yep.
What about pre that? You said construction. Where are you from? Kind of where, how did you end up here?
I was a trailing husband or trailing spouse. So I ended up in South Texas at a very small school in a very rural neighborhood. And again, it was the kind of thing where I've got this MIS degree, but here I am in Millin, Georgia, essentially. There's no computer systems here. There's no Google.
At all.
There's not, there's not even like the Chinese knockoff giggle, you know what I mean? I mean, there's nothing. And so I literally went out, so sometimes, man, you ask me a question about entrepreneurship. So all this stuff ties together. Sometimes you become an entrepreneur out of necessity. And so there was nothing for me to do. We had a newborn. I didn't want to drive an hour and a half to the nearest town because that means a three hours away from my kid every day. And, and we didn't have access to really good daycare. So I needed to find something where I could be close to home and yet still make money. So, you know, when I was in college, I worked for a guy for about three years and we remodeled apartments. He had about 60 apartments. And so that's what we did every weekend. And I did that for three years and over the summers. And so I said, what the heck? I can hang drywall and I know how to knock on doors. And so I literally just, not knowing anyone in this community, never lived in Texas, never been in South Texas, just started knocking on doors of realtors. Hi, my name is Phil. I do construction work. I'm just looking for, we just moved to town. I'm just looking for some small stuff. You got anybody who needs anything? You need anything?
Anything.
Anything. And so I started, let's see, I did a couple of small jobs, just like hanging a ceiling fan.
When did you land your biggest one?
Well, and then, and then I, and then I did a small drywall job for somebody and he goes, can you do a whole house? I was like, yeah, sure. So he had these like rundown houses that he was like modernizing. He was putting in like new PVC, taking out the old cast iron stuff, putting in PVC, taking out the copper, putting in the new flex plumbing, that kind of thing. uh flex plumbing, that kind of thing. Um and just started, you know, I got some tools that I got one of those panel jacks that allows you to do ceilings, I got one of those uh screw guns that allows you to put in fifty screws in about thirty seconds and and just started uh and probably did like, I don't know, twenty houses by myself and then I had to hire a helper and then I hired another guy and then I had two crews and then I got ten guys running at one point. And uh you know, then we started doing uh entire house remodels, we're doing the siding and replacing windows and did a two-story roof one time and decided I didn't like roofs, so we went back to doing windows and siding and uh I've done my fa- I've I I think I told you, I've laid, I don't know, personally laid, I don't know, a hundred thousand square feet of tile just by myself, so I've done kitchen backsplashes, I've done high-end showers, so. Uh it I really, it was just a necessity. And then, you know, in two thousand and seven, we consold everything to come over here, sold all the equipment stuff. And and literally between leaving there and getting to Georgia, it's like that's when the
I think that's a, that was a great time to exit.
It it, yeah, I kind of got lucky. And and that's another thing in entrepreneurship, sometimes you get lucky.
Ooh.
I mean, it's tough out there and I know, you know, to 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 leave your, you know, your fate to the wind or whatever you want to call it. I mean, sometimes people just get, you're you're in the right place. I mean, look at, look at Mark Cuban. I mean, sold broadcast dot com for what, five hundred million dollars?
That's right.
If he just sold it six months later, it would have been fifty million, you know what I mean? So he wouldn't have had nearly as much cash.
So so was there?
Sometimes it's just timing.
Was there something in there, like in the decision, that led you to believe that that was coming? Or was it just, okay, well, you know, the the uh your wife had moved to Statesboro and and the family was moving there?
Well, we were um, I I was selling some stuff and then I was realizing that, hey, this thing is getting uh you know, they were, this is back when they were doing hundred and twenty-five percent loans in California.
Okay.
No doc loans and things like that, I'm thinking, man, you're not doing, so yeah, it just, I just, so wh- when I got to Georgia, you know, things over the summer kind of went squirrely, and so I just said, you know what, this is probably not, you know, let's let's see how this plays out. And then it just got worse and it just got worse, so I was like, you know what, and you know, construction didn't come back for for years. So now it's strong as, now it's crazy, now it's the other way around. So all you construction guys who might be listening, put your pennies away. Because it's not always good times like this, just telling you.
I I feel like there's this wave, right? There's just constantly this up, down, up, down. That's just the market in general. Um you know, we're in a spot right now in uh the economy that's really interesting. I mean, there's certain sectors of the economy that are absolutely just booming, right?
Going nuts.
Stocks are just like literally killing it. Um what do you think, like these local markets like Statesboro? What can we expect out of uh the marketplace, right? So like, I can tell you from my perspective, like restaurants have definitely taken, for me, they've taken a bit of a hit, especially uh within this period of time of covid. Um but we're starting to see people come back to restaurants. I I I definitely think that people uh they they need to be social, we're social creatures at 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 the core. Um but besides restaurants, just as a general kind of like blanket statement, if you will, what do you think is the, how how is the market going to move uh move going forward?
Are are you looking for free advice for your so yummy restaurant?
Absolutely. What are you talking about? That's the, that's the whole point that you're here, man, free advice, right?
I see. Come on my podcast. He's not actually broadcasting this, is he? Um so what would I recommend for uh restaurants, man? It's the same thing I'd I'd recommend in normal times, man.
Not restaurants, let's just talk about the market just in general.
I mean, find out what people want. I- i- so if you're in a restaurant uh business right now, you know, providing outdoor seating for folks, that's what they want. If you can provide that for them, um um you you you'll do well right now and you'll be able to transition, you'll be able to pivot. So I think that's where, that's where New York and San Francisco and in Savannah and Atlanta, places like that are suffering because if you really look, where where do you go to eat? You don't go to eat like at a, you know, just not to throw in a competitor, but Nats Landing's got a patio. You don't see patios like that up in
That's right.
In Atlanta, or especially in the northern cities, they're all crammed into these little tiny, you know, well, no one wants to be in the
Expensive.
Yeah, and nobody wants to.
You spend the money on a patio, no one wants to spend money on.
Well, in New York, it's it's cold half the year, so you're not gonna be sitting out there when it's a, so uh that's I mean, I think the South is poised, I mean, ironically with the sun and everything else, I think just in general, the South is going to see, you're gonna see a lot of Exodus this way. And and shockingly, uh for probably one of the first times, we're gonna see a de-urbanization of America. I think we're gonna see
I agree.
A move back to, not so much suburbia, though there's gonna be some of that, but but definitely to smaller communities. Cause let's face it, there's still plenty of room inside Statesboro where you can find a piece of property and build something nice and then you've got some walkability and things like that. And Statesboro's not the only one, you know, uh Vidalia and Brunswick and Richmond Hill and 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 Swainsboro even. Swainsboro's got a lovely downtown and so if you had a house that wasn't far from Swainsboro and you get a coffee shop and grocery store and, I mean, let's face it, you're not going to the opera, I mean, unless you're just way up there, you're not going to the opera every day. You're not going to the theater every day, you know, you you do daily mundane routines. And uh and folks are realizing that, hey, you know what, I can do that daily routine in a less concentrated area and still have access, but you know, you don't have as much traffic, you don't have as much frustration, you just don't have as much you know, concentration of people. So I don't know, it's an interesting time, man, it's 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 a, it's an interesting time, but I think it's a it's a good time. I mean, every generation, every uh country goes through cycles and I think this is just one of those deals where, you know, our baby boomers are getting older and and the millennials are having kids and the the Gen Z is coming up and you guys think that the millennials and the dang baby boomers are crazy. Fortunately, you think the Gen Xs are cool, cause you know, we're just looking at, we're looking at the 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 baby boomers and millennials and shaking our heads too, so so you know, fist bump to the, to, is it the I Gen or is it Gen Z?
I think it's Gen Z, I think that's, yeah.
Fist bump to Gen Z, Gen X is right with you, so. Anyway, uh no, it's 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 an interesting time, but if if I mean, if if you if you come back to entrepreneurship, I mean, find something you like to do that people have a demand for that service, whatever that may be. And if you do that and then, you know, do the smart things. You have to manage your business, you gotta pay the bills, you gotta look at cash flow. These are all kinds of things that, those are the kinds of things you can learn uh as an entrepreneur, but finding what you like to do that other people need, that's, so yeah, you do have to have the passion. But they're also, again, if you have a passion for something that nobody wants, you know.
It won't matter.
You love painting pineapples blue. That's great, dude. You can set up an eatsy shop, but don't expect that thing to be, you know, don't expect bluepineapple.com to blow up anytime soon.
That's right.
I mean, unless you get a crazy cat, you know, like uh, what was it, Angry Cat or Grumpy Cat, right?
Yeah.
That that's, that's like a twelve million dollar business.
That's right.
That was a complete accident. And even if you ask the guy, he's like, man, I just posted a picture of my grumpy cat and and just said, here's my grumpy cat, and yeah, now all of a sudden, he's got a ten million dollar business selling grumpy cat t-shirts, so.
So sometimes you just get lucky.
Sometimes you just never know, man. I mean, come on, who plans out a grumpy cat thing? I mean, everybody wants to do that viral video, but let's face it. It's hard to create a viral video. It's viral for a reason. You just, it just comes out of nowhere. It comes out of some bat in China, right? It's viral, you don't know where it comes from. I'm just saying, right? Or wherever, they come from other places too, I'm sure, yeah.
Well, Phil, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you coming on to the show. Uh thanks for sharing some knowledge about entrepreneurship, everything that you got. And uh yeah, uh looking forward to the the future of America, to say the least.
Well, and I I want to say thanks to you too, Adam, cause um you know, you're part of an exciting new generation of entrepreneurs here in Statesboro. And not only that, but um you really do a good job, you're really active at connecting other entrepreneurs together. I hear other entrepreneurs in in town uh talking about you. And and not just your your drive, but just your enthusiasm and your your energy for business. Um you know, it's it's infectious and um when you talked about connections like that, when you can create connections in the business community, the more of those you can create, the the more your community gets better and 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 the more your community grows. So what you're doing, this, reaching out, uh talking with other uh entrepreneurs, it's important stuff too, so I appreciate you having me on.
Thank you so much. That's a show. Appreciate it.
Gen Z.
Gen Z.